Okay, I think we're ready to start. Thanks for the opportunity to have this get together. The main purpose as far as I know is that we want to make sure that the Select Board has an opportunity to comment on Part One, provide any inputs, comments, criticism, whatever, so that we can go forward and finalize this document. We want to put it online next week along with Part Two, which is essentially the data portion of the background information that goes as a companion piece to this part. We have a tight but doable timeline. I think the big, a couple of questions to start off with. The public hearing is 22nd of February. Do we want, do everybody feel comfortable with starting at nine o'clock? Or should we make it 10 o'clock?
I think 10. Nine might be a little early for people to get.
It's the middle of the night.
I would recommend 10.
All right, 10 o'clock, then I'll make sure that.
But other people may have other opinions on that.
No, I was thinking about that. I said initially nine o'clock, but then I started to say, well, maybe that's too early. 10 a.m., okay. And God forbid if we have a huge snowstorm or something like that, how do we address that issue?
Hey, we're in Maine. Come on now.
All right. So I mean, that's really the singular opportunity that we have, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that that's going to work for everybody. If anybody has any ideas or have any additional thoughts about that, let us know so we can adjust accordingly. The other thing I wanted to say before we really get into the nuts and bolts of this is that we are going to have drop-in sessions where people can come in from the town if they have any questions or issues. I'd like to have those sessions in one of the small meeting rooms down here on the first floor, and I'll work that out with the task force and try to get people lined up for certain days. But I think first week and a half or so of February is probably the best time to do that. That gives enough time between then and the public hearing for people to come in and ask questions and so on. It's possible we could end off or end up taking care of issues before they even get to the public hearing. So I'll put out more information on that later, but we'll shoot for the first week to 10 days of February to have those drop-in sessions. And I think we're ready to go. One other thing I'd just like people's input on. I put together this two-page summary. Mark and I went back and forth a little bit on it about what should be in it and so on. But I thought because it's going out to the public via email on the email list, that was the plan, that there ought to be enough information in here about the plan so this can be kind of a standalone document, not just talk about what we've done in the last six or eight months, but to sort of provide additional information above and beyond that.
There's a bunch of these summaries. Anyone else need some?
You just sat down where they were all put on the table.
Well, they're right here if anyone needs them.
So I mean, if you look at this, it kind of addresses the basic outline of the draft plan, talks about the vision and what's in it, talks about the areas that we've identified, 13 areas requiring attention, goals, policies, and strategies, and then a fairly extensive section about the future land use. Again, if anybody thinks these things ought to be changed, modified, or so on, let me know as soon as possible, and then I'll make sure that those changes get incorporated and we can get it online, subject to town administrators' look. Okay, all right. I'd like to start by asking Dave and Kevin if you have any major comments or issues with Part One. And do you feel like we ought to go through it? Is that what you would prefer to do, go through this quickly?
Quickly. First of all, I want to say something I really like in the introduction, is that fishing is not a quaint historical idea. I like that. That's a very nice thing to put in there.
Yeah, it's, okay, so let's go through it very quickly. If it jogs anybody's memory or whatever, so be it. The acknowledgement upfront, the people on the plan. We had actually over the last three and a half years, three people have left the task force, but two have joined. So we're pretty much at the same level, which I think is great because it's been a long slog for everybody. I just want to make that point. Table of contents, straightforward. The areas of concentration are identified in the table of contents. There are 13, I believe. They're not arranged in any kind of priority order, although what I tried to do was to focus on those things that we thought were clearly important to the town, the marine, fishing industry, natural resources, and so on. But there's, don't ascribe anything particular in fact that something that you're really concerned about might be on the lower part of the list. It's just kind of the way it worked out. Okay, comprehensive planning, it's on page one, Part One. We've gone through and kind of documented, diagrammed the steps involved in this process, what the plan really is all about, big picture, and identifies challenges and opportunities for the community, kind of coalesces planning efforts and so on. And we're looking out 10, say 10 to 15 years from now. It also makes the point that the future land use plan is a very important part of the document, so we might want to spend a little bit more time on that when we get to it. Background, again, fairly straightforward. 10 to 15 years out, what goals, values, and what are the challenges that Hartswell needs to meet to make the vision come true? A little introduction, the introduction about how to use the plan is contained in each section. If you want to just look at key points, you go to the executive summary. If you want to dig into the data. And the second part of this plan is available. It's another hundred or so pages, I think, of information, graphs, charts, data, history, and so on. So that, I left that up, by the way, probably longer than I should have, but I thought it was value in leaving it up because there's a lot of good information about the town in that back section. So, but we are updating that, and it should be available in the next couple of days. Okay, executive summary. First part, setting the stage. We tried to identify details, not only about the town itself, but also about some of the things that really impact or would be involved with the planning activity that we have to go forward in the future. Things like a steady population, a population that's getting older, dramatic increase in housing costs, the impact of climate change, and a strong desire to maintain open space in the town's rural character. I think that's all contained in this area. Moving on, page 10. Going through the process of the plan, the rough timelines, dates that we went through. This actually started in November of 2022. So it's been going on for quite a while. Actually, it's November 21st.
I was going to say, yeah, yeah, 1800s.
All right, so there's a mistake that we have to correct. Any questions about comments on regional collaboration, engaging the community, the vision statement? There are, I think, eight different parts of that, and it's sort of self-explanatory. I will say that Jane had a comment about the first statement, enhancing our sense of community. I think she felt like maybe we can do a better job at solidifying how, what that really means and how it might happen, so on. Working waterfront, vibrant working waterfront, preservation of the beauty of the town, increase the availability and diversity of housing, which, you know, is a controversial issue, not so much because it's not needed, but because there are different ways to get to where we want to go. Residential growth that sustains water quality and maintains rural character. Again, that's a tough combination of factors. Try to support a thriving economy, a local economy, enhancing public participation. So these are solid objectives, parts of the vision. And any questions or comments or concerns about those? Okay. Now we get on to the key elements and strategies. In the last version, our initial version, we started out with housing. And it started that way because initially in our early meetings, housing was a very prominent topic. We got a lot of input, comments, and so on. Also, the Affordable Housing Working Committee was kicking off at that time. There was lots of things, not only internally in the town, lots of press, both statewide and nationwide, about lack of affordable housing and so on. So all those things kind of merged together, and it was sort of, it kind of hit people right between the eyes as we started out. When we came back and looked at it, we really said to ourselves, what is this town really all about? And housing is definitely an issue. But what this town is really about historically and currently is the waterfront, the working waterfront, the commercial fishing, the recreation, all of those things that pull people here to this town. And so that's where we wanted to start with this particular version. We looked at the land use along the shoreline. We were making some recommendations about merging Commercial Fishing Zones One and Two. We supported the Right to Fish movement, which I know the town has adopted at least a policy to support that, not necessarily an ordinance, but a policy. And that's something I think resonates.
We should talk about that.
Okay. You want to do it now, or you want to?
No, but I'm just saying as we move forward, we should consider that.
Yeah, okay. Harbor management, it's another important thing to talk about because there are more and more people using the waters off our shore, both for recreation and for commercial fishing and so on. Aquaculture is another thing that's kind of in the picture right now, and I know that the town has an aquaculture working group and they're wrestling with that, and I think that's good. When I had some early meetings with some of the fishermen in the Cundies Harbor area, they said one thing to me that kind of stuck all along, and that is access. We need access to the water. And, you know, sometimes it's very challenging. There's not a lot of parking, there's not a lot of storage areas, and so on. And so that's the reason that this little comment about access is in there. After the waterfront, protecting the environment, critical to this town. And we gave it prominent space early on in the process to make sure that everybody understood that the task force and what we heard from the community was clearly stated that this was very important. This kind of ropes in groundwater resources, low-impact development, open space, the open space plan, scenic views, and so on and so forth. All of these things are very important. And then we get to housing. And at this point, basically, in our discussions in the task force, there was not 100% agreement on everything. And I think the biggest sticking point at this particular point in time remains, how do you want to, the issue of cluster housing and development above and beyond using existing structures, like they call house splitting and renting and things like that, which clearly would fit the mold of this town very well without really disturbing either the water or the look of the town. But if you start developing more diverse housing, then there's a disagreement on how to proceed from that particular point. But that's something that's important. Housing, the cost of houses in the area, obviously, sky high. Yes?
Thank you.
Right, yeah. And what we've tried to do here is suggest that development is, should be focused more in the interior zone, not along the shoreline. There's not a whole lot to develop on the shoreline. But interior zone along all parts of Hartswell, there is some developable land in those areas. May not be a lot, but there's some there.
And I would add too, that is a conflicting goal because that's the rural area. We talk a lot about wanting to protect the rural character. And some of the zoning ordinance recommendations in the Affordable Housing document are, would absolutely ruin the rural character.
I'll make one minor editorial comment. And actually, I blame you for turning me on to Randall Lorenz.
Please, please don't do that, Al. That's not, that's, it's inaccurate.
Well, okay, I read his study. It's called Rural by Design. He's a landscape designer, landscape architect, and so on. And fairly prominent one. And my basic conclusion after going through this information was that
Don't forget the mic, Al. Don't forget the mic.
You can maintain rural character and still have developments involved with small houses on smaller lots and so on. It takes creativity, and it takes planning. And, you know, finding the right place and the right circumstances is obviously important. We're not saying that that has to happen in Hartswell. What we're saying is it's possible if it's done correctly. So. We conclude the executive summary with sort of some nice comments and statement. Great picture. Okay, that brings us to 18 goals, policies, and strategies. I'm not sure, how detailed do you want to go through this? Should we talk, just say marine economy? Does anybody have any questions or reviews with the section on marine economy?
Only in that I like that comment about it's not a quaint historical idea. I think we move forward from that.
I thought this chart was great. Look at the lobstering industry in that chart.
It's a roller coaster ride.
It's really, it communicates so much graphically.
And I asked George how it was going this year, and he says that they're doing pretty well, but he's not really 100% certain, I guess.
The landings are down, but the price is compensating for it somewhat.
So, yeah, you're right, this is a good chart, and I think it kind of speaks volumes about the economy and what the fishing community, the challenges that they face and so on. And they are daunting, to put it that way. We've identified six main goals on the marine economy on page 20. I won't read them all, but one thing I think is important to say, I added integrate aquaculture as appropriate into traditional fishing activities because I know, again, that's a debatable issue. People can come on both sides of that particular argument. And I know that that working group is trying to resolve conflicts and so on before they get too big and come up with some sort of working arrangement between the traditional fishermen and people that want to develop aquaculture.
I can speak to that part real quick. We've developed some maps in the last couple of months that we got fishermen involved, fogey fishermen involved, clam diggers, you know, and leaseholders. And we've actually got the state on board. We've had talks with DMR. Some of the legislators have come down, you know, as far as giving the town a little more input on where these leases are given because frankly, we have, they talked to us about it. DMR is going to do what they want. But this is giving us a little more leverage with DMR. They said, look, we have these maps. Here are the reasons why this standard lease or LPA shouldn't go here or go there. So we're that close to being.
Yeah, I think that was a great initiative to get that group together and look at that problem more in more detail and obviously what we did here in this plan. All right, continuing marine economy, right to fish. We talked, we addressed that.
Yeah, we really should move that to an ordinance rather than, you know, the policy is nice, but it's not enforceable.
Okay.
It's a good goal to aim for.
Okay. Land use review, we're talking about the future land use plan and how that could potentially impact the marine economy. Harbor management goes without saying, it's becoming more of a challenge. I tried to get some updated data on moorings, but it turns out that, I'm not sure it's going to happen because Paul Plummer is incorporating a new system of tracking and keeping tabs of moorings. And he said he's still kind of getting familiar with the technology. So we may or may not see updates in that particular area. Any questions about marine economy? There are goals, two main goals. On page 22, protect and enhance the ability to commercially harvest finfish, lobster, shellfish, and marine worms. Preserve and expand tidal and deep-water access. And again, the aquaculture is addressed not as a major goal, but also, but something that should be a part of the process. Okay, page 24, moving from marine economy to marine resources. Again, stressing the importance of that particular part of the town. We've identified several goals. Improve water quality through initiatives to protect the environment, to reduce runoff and things like that. Enhance the ecosystem as much as possible. Understand and mitigate the impacts of climate change on marine resources and work with neighboring communities and regional organizations to protect shared resources. So that's kind of where we're heading. I think Jane had some, had a recommendation about adding to Goal One on page 25, one of the strategies, expand the last strategy. And I'm trying to think. Yeah. Seek opportunities to collaborate with private regional entities to supplement statewide data. You know, that's something that we could easily add, and I'll bring that forward to the task force tomorrow.
Al, just a quick addition that probably is, you know, doesn't need to be in here, but I think it's really important that the town realize that the impact of rural development in the interior affects marine water quality. And I was part of a study that was done 30 years ago where we tracked development in the interior and monitored streams that went from the interior to the shoreline. And everything that was in that interior got to the shoreline. So the planning board is working to really start to take a look at streams, development near streams, what happens on land on the interior and how it affects marine water quality. And I think you can expect to see more from that.
It's one of the reasons we do the roadside cleanup. That stuff all ends up in the ocean. And, you know, it's not just to make the roadside pretty, it's to help the environment.
It's a good point. Okay. Moving on. Let me ask if anybody has any questions about the goals that we've identified in marine resources. We have four goals. I, you know, clearly identified pages 25 and 26.
I just want to make an overall comment, Al, and it doesn't pertain necessarily just to this section. And you do acknowledge it in the plan that people need to understand if we're going to follow up and we're going to meet some of these goals and objectives and work on these strategies, it's going to take more staff time and people, personnel, grants, funding. You know, there's a lot here, and they're, you know, great goals, but we'll need more staff. We cannot accomplish all of these goals and objectives without more staffing assistance, contracted services, studies, funding, et cetera. So I just kind of make that general statement that we all need to understand that. If we have expectations that we're going to accomplish a lot of these items, it will take more person power.
I'm not sure we specifically call that out in the report.
I saw something where you acknowledged that labor, labor will need to be addressed as to how we.
I know some of Jane's comments pertain to, okay, we have all these suggestions, recommendations, so on. How are we really going to hone in on the most important ones and?
She does address that, and I share that because if you look at all of these checklists, where are our priorities? Where should we start? I think that's what she's getting at in terms of one of her comments.
For the purposes of this plan, do you think we need to do anything more with that?
I just think being straightforward about, you know, what future town meetings can expect if we're going to be working on accomplishing these items. That it doesn't happen without more staff support, contracted service support, professional support in certain areas, funding for studies, that kind of thing.
I applaud your reminder, Kristy. I mean, I was looking at work with neighboring communities and regional organizations to protect shared resources. That's so important because water doesn't stop at our boundary. And yet, in order to do that, it takes staff time. And, you know, you can't be putting out a fire here and trying to put out a fire regionally at the same time when you have one person.
That's why we have Mary Ann.
She's not going to be around forever, and we need somebody that's.
Yes, she is.
She's saying, excuse me?
A quick question. Under fiscal capacity, I believe you do touch on that? And not to say that we should maybe make, mention it earlier in the process generally?
Yeah, I remember, just an aside, I remember a comment, our question, Gene Weil asked, I think at the last public hearing we had, something to the effect, how much is all this going to cost? And, you know, it's, when you start adding up possible things, like a new fire station or, you know, rows and doing things to help mitigate climate change and so on. These are tough decisions that are going to involve funding. And so, you know, my answer would be it really depends on how much the town bites off and, you know, during this entire process. But, you know, good question. People think, there are people thinking about those things.
Under, under Bold Number Two, it says limit the number of private docks and size of floats. Good luck with that.
Yeah.
We do look into eelgrass beds when we approve floats, but geez, well.
Well, I think the, I think the whole thing about having a community dock for subdivisions with three or four, these three. with three or four, these three to five, what's, what's the exact language for these subdivision community docks? Do you recall, Mark?
Well, any, any new subdivision.
Needs a community dock. And I think the intent is to do that very thing, try to reduce the number of things sticking out into the.
Yeah, good idea.
This is also part of the reason why it's really important to have fishermen involved in local government because the planning board is asked to take a look at private docks. And we're supposed to be making sure, as Al knows, that it's not interfering with commercial fishing. Well, the planning board doesn't commercial fish. I mean, unless you have someone on the board that does. And Matt, Matt has pointed out a number of times when we have really come really close to not fulfilling the obligations of the ordinance. And so the mapping that Kevin talked about was really important, and we need to just do a better job at looking at water resource and being courageous enough to turn private docks down and say sorry.
Well, you need something, you need a rule or a law or something to go by, or they'll sue you. You know, you need, we need to have something to hang our hat on in those cases.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, Paul Plummer comes in and talks to the select board. Ultimately, you folks are the final arbiters. And his basic, you know, if it interferes with fishing, he makes a statement or doesn't, whatever, at that point.
Yeah, we moved one last year because it was in a clamming area and it was sitting on the flats. But most of these, at low tide, there's either no water underneath them or a foot. You know, they're not interfering with fishing.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. I'm on page twenty-seven, freshwater resources. Very important to the town, obviously. Any kind of development decision has to deal with or involves water. Is there enough there as well as septic? The goals and so on of this particular section are sort of self-explanatory. I just ask if any, anyone has any questions or issues with respect to freshwater? We want to protect, obviously, the groundwater resources, not only in terms of quantity, but also quality to the extent possible.
Al, I would just mention, early on, we, we looked at the possibility, and I know Mary Ann's continuing to work on this, at working with private well owners in order to understand more clearly information about how their well is functioning.
Yep.
And all of that was going to be on a voluntary basis, and it, it didn't make it into the effort, but that's something the town needs to do.
Any other questions or comments on freshwater resources? Natural resources. We've sort of expanded the look a little bit, looking at what Harpswell has above and beyond just water resources. And again, very important to the town, maintaining the look and feel that people like about living here, and the importance of protecting these resources for habitat, valuable habitat for animals and so on and so forth. So it's, it's here. I think it's a worthy part of a plan that we should focus on here. And I'll just say, does anybody have any questions about any goals or that you see here on the natural resources?
No, I like the directing growth to minimize the impact on natural resources. I mean, that's going to be.
It's, I mean, the words are nice, but.
I know.
It's hard.
Yeah.
You know, let's face it.
We're talking about private property rights and a lot of other things, yeah. And also protecting scenic views, that's something that we always get squawked about, you know, who cares what, you know, that's my house we're talking about.
Yeah, Dave, you just took the words right out of my mouth. We asked people at a workshop early on, and Al, I'm sure remembers this, to draw and identify places that they felt were scenic, scenic importance in the town. I don't think any of that made its way into this plan. We asked people to do the work, and they did the work, but it's not in here.
I think, I think it might be in the second, part two. Yeah, I think there's a map.
I, I didn't see it.
Okay. We'll double check that.
Well, it's, it does under this, it says inventory the scenic views, so we know, you know, what's important.
Anything else? Okay, then we move on to recreation and community services. It's an important part of the, the plan in terms of maintaining, at least maintaining where we are right now in terms of trails, hiking, you know, programs that kids in the town can take advantage of, whether it's baseball, softball, basketball, the linkage between Harpswell and Brunswick and boat and college for swimming and so on. All these things are, are important, not only now, but also in the future. And again, it's addressed here in the plan. Provide high-quality recreational facilities and programming. Create a robust network of water access points to support boating, fishing, and other water activities as well as commercial fishing. And then we talk about liaison dialogue with services of, in the, in the region that we can take advantage of. Okay, public facilities. This includes our fire and rescue folks. It includes our recycling center. It includes town plant, town plant, programs that involve not only young folks, but older folks in the community. And there are questions about, you know, should there be more investment in some of these things? I know that the, they're wrestling with the central, you're not calling it a fire station, you're calling it an emergency services station or something.
Building, emergency services building.
How best to proceed with respect to that and?
We actually have an architect. The firm we hired is coming Thursday afternoon at four.
Good.
To meet with the board, you know, the fire and rescue committee. Then at that point, we're going to vote to move it to the select board to get a warrant, possibly.
Anyone have any other comments about public facilities? Again, it's fundamental to our future, and it's here in the plan. One might not think immediately of transportation as being important, but when you have two main roads going in and out of Harpswell, and if there's a problem, it affects a lot of people. So it's something that we have to keep squarely in front of us in terms of being important. And I guess the town, in some respects, takes advantage of the fact that the majority of roads in the town are private roads, which means that there's no requirement for the town to take care of them, if you will. But there's enough to where it's a costly enterprise. So we need to maintain not only the look, but also the safety of these roads and making sure that that's a priority in the future. And, you know, one of the main things, climate change. I live on Johnson Point Road in Oars Island, and we can have great access from the houses on Johnson Point Road to Route twenty-four, but if you get down to the Oars Island Bridge, and that's washed out, you're not going anywhere. So, or you can go to Biggs maybe.
Do what my grandfather did and just row.
That's an option, too. But anyway, so I guess I just bring that up because it is important that, you know, the way our town is laid out and so on, it's intertwined, if you will, with the road network that we have in, in climate change.
I like that you've included pedestrian and bicycle access. And there's a group of twenty-seven people that are interested in doing this, and we've begun to inventory areas where, talking to landowners where we could possibly build bike paths. It's going to be an expensive proposition.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the only areas that I'm aware of is, is on Route twenty-four north of Mountain Road, pretty much going toward Brunswick. There's enough room there to have bicycling and so on, but.
Well, they do have bike lanes. They're about twelve inches wide, but I mean, it does help a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. You got to get one of those racing bikes that are real thin. Okay, anything else? Any other comments or questions about transportation? Okay, fiscal capacity. I think we start to, to talk a little bit about a number of issues that are going to require funding. And in particular, the sustainability plan, implementation, reserve account, SPIRA, which was brought into being in 2023 to address climate change. I don't know, are there any other special pots of money other than the reserve fund that should?
Confess now.
Hidden places.
Yeah. Okay, but again, this is, it's, this is our fiscal capacity, our ability to pay for a number of these initiatives. We're fortunate to have, be in good fiscal shape, if you will, and good people taking care of the money that comes into this town. So we're lucky in that regard. Anything else?
I mean, the only other reserve that it comes to mind when you ask that question is we do have a land acquisition reserve, and I have heard the town lands committee, I think, and maybe harbor and waterfront suggesting that we should maintain a certain amount of money in that fund so that if some piece of property became available, not that the town would have all the money to purchase it, but it would have some money to put toward a potential purchase or purchase and sale agreement that might lead to a town meeting vote. Any of that land acquisition money has to be approved by the town meeting itself. The select board can't purchase property on its own. So that, that was an issue that's been mentioned from time to time. I don't know if it made it to your, your task force level. It exists.
I don't, I don't remember talking about that fund specifically, so.
There is some money in this coming up budget, you know, for, for that.
Are we talking like thousands or tens of thousands?
Well, we're talking at maintaining at, I think, around a hundred thousand dollar level.
Yeah.
Similar to the SPIRA account.
Doesn't get you much these days, a hundred thousand.
Kristy, Kristy, what is in that now?
What is in that now?
Yeah, approximately?
Off the top of my head, I want to say maybe forty or fifty.
Yeah, I was going to think close to that, yeah.
Okay, good to know. We'll, we'll discuss this and see if there's a way we can add something in there. Okay, next, the economy. I'm on page forty-eight, so we're making progress here.
So you put in there, maintain data on businesses. We tried to do that with short-term rentals. Maybe we went about it the wrong way, but it would be nice to know how many of those we have. I mean, we tried to plan for.
Specifically, short-term rentals?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, all businesses, everything that's going on in town. I mean, we tried to plan for roads and recycling and, you know, everything else, fire and rescue, and having those, having that data would be very good.
Does the Harpswell Business Association, do they have anything that the town might leverage in terms of data and information like that? I know, I talked to them once, but this did not come up in the discussion that I had. We could kind of pulse, pulse then to see if they have any, any data, but.
I mean, the world comes down on you when you try to mention anything about short-term rentals, but it would be nice to know how many we have. I don't, I'm not interested in, you know, regulating them in any way, but.
I think it's around five hundred.
Around five hundred, yeah. It's, it's nice to know these things.
Where do you get that from?
Online, Airbnb accounts, VRBOs. And back during the, when we were looking at all this, I talked to some of the local, Heather, Heather Allen, different people. Then you go on Airbnb, they give you, they show you a number on how many accounts there are in Harpswell.
Is that like from credit card information or?
Nope, but Airbnb and VRBO and plus private people.
So there is, there are ways to get the information.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just going to go look.
Okay, good info. I think maintaining data on businesses has its own set of challenges, but it would be nice to be a little bit more aware of exactly how much of these particular activities are going on in the town. It certainly would help decision-making in the future. So it's, it's an aspirational thing that we have here, but. All right. Balance between local business and quality of life for all residents. I guess that's a nice way of saying I have this nice house and I don't want, you know, some fishing enterprise or something that's going to impact the perceived quality that I have here. We have to balance the pros and cons about these things. It's sort of mother of an apple pie, but, but these are sometimes hard decisions. And getting back to data, understanding at the micro level, economic conditions and changes throughout. I mean, we, we talk about supporting local businesses. That's something, obviously, that we can do. But I remember discussions that we had with Viewshed during the course of this that they were having difficulty getting a hold of solid data relative to businesses, especially since a lot of the business that we have is in the fishing industry where you essentially have a lot of independent businessmen, owners, and so on. We don't want to get in their knickers too much. All right, historical and historic and archaeological resources. There are a bunch here in the town, and I think it's important that we set out as a goal to preserve these structures or bridges and, because that's, that's an important part of Harpswell's future, as well as adding to what we have currently here. A lot of these might be impacted by climate change. I mean, we've already had the Cribstone Bridge battered last, last January by storms. Could happen again, but these are some things that I think we need to keep in mind as we move forward into the future. I think, I think understanding Harpswell's future. I don't know about education, how much of Harpswell's history is exposed during classes here, but to me, it would be fantastic. And I think, at least at the elementary school level, there'd be a lot of interest in pursuing that. Okay, any comments or questions beyond that?
I think naming the bridge after Laty's a good idea.
Wouldn't that require state approval?
Probably, yes, that's a state bridge. We could do it.
We did get a plaque approved.
Yeah, yeah.
We did, but we, we put it in the building.
Oh, you didn't? It's not up on the road?
It's right by the tax office.
Okay. Okay, agriculture and forestry. There are not a lot of farms left in Harpswell, at least farms of any real size. And so, but we thought it was important because it's, again, it's part of the open space and the feeling that people get when they drive around here. Even if they're not being plowed, it's, it's something that's preserved as an important element. So, but anything in particular people want to say about agriculture and forestry? Forestry is essentially, well, heck of a lot smaller than it used to be, but, but almost non-existent. I know there are, there's certain areas that are cut and logs, trees hauled down.
A hundred years ago, there weren't any trees in Harpswell, so I mean, that's.
That's right. I've seen, I've seen pictures like that.
Fifty years ago.
I recognize you have a map showing the properties enrolled in the farmland tax program.
Yeah.
But I wondered, since this is a forestry section, we do have properties that are getting the tree farm tax exemption benefit.
Okay.
Is there a map that shows that? And the area I'm thinking of at the moment is on Basin Point Road, the Woolley property. It's a pretty massive tree farm, but it doesn't really get acknowledged as a separate kind of issue here.
Okay.
And, and when you're talking about forestry, are you recognizing all of the, the town property, for instance, like the cliff trail that, you know, has heavily forested areas on it? Or are you looking at other parcels outside of town and land trust?
No, I think, I think, I think the intent was to. No, I think, I think, I think the intent was to at least note the fact that, you know, the town does have heavily forested areas. But there was also an economic component that I think because I think people thought that it was really not a lot going on in that area, we kind of minimized. I'll, we'll, we'll take this up and see if we can come up with something to add to this.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Agriculture and forestry. Okay, now we get to housing, page 56. To be honest and blunt about it, this was the big sticking point that we ran into the first time we tried to bring this to a town meeting. There was early support, as I said, when we had meetings, there was a lot of support, discussion about housing. And, you know, you got the feeling that, hey, everybody was on board. But as we went through and time went on, we heard a, a different take on things. And, and so the approach that we took was to let the Affordable Housing Working Group come up with a report. And based on their close look at things to basically adopt the conclusions and recommendations of the report. As I said before, the section, again, that's most controversial is dealing with enhancing or enabling.
Goal four, goal four is going to be your problem.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, I, I think that the housing report, I think, was careful to caveat the fact that, you know, any decision, if you're talking about doing smaller houses on small lots, that any decision on, on that level needs to be done carefully, keeping in mind water, septic capacity and so on, let alone, you know, where is this going to happen and what's the design going to look like and so on. There were lots of questions. It's just not a matter of putting a pin on a map and saying that's what we're going to, we're going to do it, so. But, yeah. I don't know if anybody wants to comment about that, but.
I'm going to comment about it. And I, you know, when I looked at this document, it was in its draft. Goal one, create opportunities for development of attainable housing policy to enhance local capacity. Establish a community loan fund, great. Explore working with conservation organizations such as Harpswell Heritage Trust, great. Encourage the creation of ADUs, great. Promote home sharing, encourage house splitting, great. All of these, love, you know, they were good. And they are, they are good. But there are things in here that I just can't support. And the, you know, we were told all along that the, the comprehensive plan should be broad statements of policies and broad strategies and all these things and goals. And that's fine and dandy, but the attainable housing report, which is adopted, if we adopt this comprehensive plan, contains the most far-reaching and specific zoning ordinance recommendations that will fundamentally alter the way that this town looks and are in conflict with the stated goals of protecting rural character. I will give you one example. If the West Harpswell School was to be developed under the proposals in the Affordable Housing Report, we would have 35 to 38 one-bedroom units on that property. I don't think that this has been thought through. This is in an area that has potable water shortages. We also haven't talked about it in terms of traffic and transportation impacts. We just put in, we didn't, Brunswick put in a four-way stop sign on the road. If we, if we don't think these things through, then we're going to have problems down the road. And a problem present, prevented is a problem solved. I don't think that the Affordable Housing Report, being part of the comp plan, adopted in a two-line reference in a small section of a large document, is transparent. And it also belies public statements that were made and that are in the anchor. And, and I will, I can talk more about those at some other point, but I can't support it. I'm not denigrating anyone. I know the folks that have worked on this have done so sincerely, but I don't think it's a wise choice at this moment, and I don't think it's been thought through. I have made it clear all along, and I will continue to do that.
So, but what would you do, take it out?
I would take it out.
Michael.
Well, what's that?
The, the reference to the report is?
Well, first of all, didn't our comp plan committee, didn't we already vote to accept their report? The select board accepted it?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure the comp plan, just because one person on the board doesn't like it, who cares?
It's not one.
All right.
Three.
All right, three.
You're right, there is a majority that went along with it.
Right.
What I'd like to say about this is the last paragraph here, it, it's basically what Amy said in different words. You know, on the bottom, it says, see the appendages for full report. And we're going along with what the attainable housing committee has come up with. So basically.
What page are you on just talking?
56.
56?
It's the last paragraph. So basically, what we've done here, the term was used kicking the can down the road. It's basically, more accurate term would be passing the buck. We've passed it to a different committee. There was a lot of controversy in the public hearings about this subject. And so we tried to basically take the controversy out. We redid the maps. And we've reworded this. But we have not taken it out, which is fine. If we're not going to take it out, let's be clear about that, about that. This year, we're basically hiding it. Let's make it very clear, you know, regardless of whether you're, you know, for, for housing on public land or you want townhouses, duplexes, cottages, you know, take that out of the equation and just be upfront about it. Let the people know what they're getting. If they're going to vote on it, let them know. Basically, what we've done here is we've hidden it.
Now, may I make a comment?
Sure.
First of all, I'm going to go back to the beginning when I got the new plan. And whoever rewrote it, I think they did a great job of starting the story. And we have, we have chosen to make the marine economy and the fishing community our focus. All I'm going to say is we have walked through all the areas and talked about how that, that's going to support the fishing community. We have a, we now have a situation where we want the fishing community to have a place to live. And we'd like them to have, be able to live close to where they work. We have a limited amount of town, of land in this town. And it's going to take some thinking and creative thinking that has been done to use what we got. It's not like we have a big section over in the right pasture that we can turn into this. It's what we can fit into our community. So I applaud the group for addressing affordable housing. This is one of the key features that is plaguing the town right now.
That's, that's fine, but instead of using this wording, see the appendices, why? Instead of referring someone to another group, take that group's information and say, read it here. Plug it in right there, what they're saying, so that people can read what they're voting on. Let's be upfront about it. If, if that's, if that's the route we're going, fine. Let's, let's let people see what it's going to look like.
I, I'm going to go even further. There were two public meetings this summer that were, there was serious opposition to the draft comp plan. The Affordable Housing Committee recommendations to develop Mitchell Field and Doughty Point for affordable housing and also to significantly reduce lot sizes. Those were soundly argued against at both of those meetings. In a September 22nd, '24 Anchor article, the Affordable Housing Committee members assured the public they had, and I quote, "abandoned the goal that would have encouraged the development of attainable housing on Mitchell Field and Doughty Point, and that they recognized an aggressive push for attainable housing could negatively affect groundwater, and the group took residents' concerns into consideration when revising the report." That is a partial truth. Goal seven, in the land use section, adopts the housing report by reference. By reference, it adopts the entire report. And the report shows clearly that not only are Mitchell Field and Doughty Point still identified as sites for affordable housing, but recommended lot sizes for affordable housing units are to be reduced by as much as 10 times the current ordinance requirements.
Let me stop you there.
You, no, I, I'm sorry.
Jesus, Amy, all you do is talk.
I'm sorry.
And you don't want another house built in this town. You've got yours, nobody else gets theirs.
I'm sorry.
That's all I heard from these committees. They moved here, most of these people are from somewhere else. They don't understand what David and I have seen in our lifetime. There's no place for my, they're lucky, I have enough land for my kids. My brother just got a house, he got lucky. But it needs, we need housing in this town. And you, you fought it since day one in this committee not to allow anything to be built. I remember years ago, you called me, you wanted a building moratorium. Because of your own personal feelings.
I, I, I'm sorry.
You're on a committee, you're supposed to.
I am not going to participate in, in really singling out anybody and questioning.
I have to single you out because.
Their values. It's not, you can do better than that. And I'm not going to participate with you.
Does that mean you're done?
No.
We, we voted on, as a committee, we are, this, this has done work. It's why it's in this report.
I, I stand by what I'm saying, and it's, it's in the public record. And it is not transparent, and it is not true. It is a partial truth at best, and I cannot support it.
But George, I have a question. I appreciate your acceptance of basically the committee's will on this, on this question.
Yeah, it's going to pass committee, you've got the votes, I mean.
Exactly.
Appreciate that.
But I'm also.
Let's just be upfront about it, that's all.
Right, well, and I'm deeply sensitive to that particular issue. To the extent that, I, I didn't sense that it was hidden, but if you feel that, I would be very appreciative if you could suggest how we could unhide it, to be clear and transparent. And I would, and I would support.
Let's take the Affordable Hou, Affordable Housing Committee's working group, whatever the name of that committee is. And instead of saying, see the appendices, say, see page 57, and plug it in right there for everyone to see what, what it is that they're voting on.
That's fine with me, I appreciate that, thanks.
That, that takes, that takes the personal opinion out of it, and that's, here it is. This is what we're doing, and, and let the voters decide.
Okay, let's, let's do this. We, we have a meeting tomorrow night. I'll, I'll try to come up with some words that that unhide it, but I think the, the, the point is that we can't just erase the possibility of, of that particular strategy from the, from the plan. I mean, we have, I, I think, in terms of the future, to represent all of the town, we need to at least provide the possibility that under the right circumstances, with the right plan, right developer and so on, you can have some smaller houses and so on. I mean, we have Hamilton Place, that's been in existence for, I mean, we're not talking quite Hamilton Place, but it's been done before in the town. People can't see Hamilton Place, so it's not in their, in their mind. But I, I, again, I go back to the things that I've read, and I'm not an expert on architecture or anything, but there are ways to address this particular issue and, I think, keep the feel of the town. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. So I think, let's work on the wording to unhide it. But I, I think we've already, we've already said that this array of possibilities for housing are, are serious, and we need to look at them in a serious way in the future.
Just, I just wanted to bring this up today because, you know, this got tense before the meeting even started today. If we wait till February 22nd to bring this up, there's no chance to amend it, so, the sooner the better.
Okay, well. All right, so we've, we've, we've poked the beer here a little bit, but I, I think it's, it's a good discussion. And let's move on. Okay, everybody agree? All right, land use. We spent a lot of time as a task force on land use, future land use and so on. And this is kind of where the rubber meets the road in a lot of ways. So I'm prepared to listen to what people have to say. I know with, with respect to Amy's comments, there is something in there about creation of attainable housing on small lots, as long as limits for water supply and sewage disposal are not violated. So that's kind of the way we worded it in this particular section. So, any other comments on future land use? Now, Mark, if you want to, you want to weigh in on this?
I, I will say under goal four.
Yeah.
Regulating what people's homes look like could be a problem. I mean, it's a nice thought.
Talking about fitting the character of the community.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, what does that mean? I think that was a comment at one of your public meetings also.
Yeah, that was, that's a good point. Because if somebody comes up like Frank Lloyd Wright and builds this magnificent house, are we going to say, no, you've got to have shingles and a high-pitched roof or something? But, okay, so that's another thing that I think we can.
In Harpswell, it's John Calvin Stevens.
John Calvin Stevens, okay. Okay, so let's, let's, we'll take a look at that.
I think it was actually earlier than that, because in the, the historical section, the town was settled in, what, 1632? So those structures aren't around, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I'd just say policy 7.2 needs, needs some serious work.
Also want to land use, so under natural resource designations, you're talking about inland resource protections from streams and wetlands and things like that. And so would those be, I mean, it's yet to be discussed and determined, but setbacks of as much as 250 feet from some of these.
Yeah, here again, I think we're trying to address concerns about open space and rural character and so on. And water quality and things like that by trying to protect the streams. If there's an issue with the distance, then that's something that certainly we could.
Well, it has to be based on reality, just, not just the way things look, but science and, you know. So when we do come up with those, with the ordinances.
Do we, Mark, do we have any kind of measure, benchmark? What does the state say about distance from a stream, for example, from? Yeah.
Oh, give him the mic, Mary.
If it's a, if it's a DEP-regulated stream, the state talks about what can happen within a 75-foot corridor on either side of the stream. I believe it talks about a 25-foot, if you will, vegetated buffer along the stream.
So if we clarify that a little bit better, that will kind of.
Well, the, actually, the proposal in the land use is to create a stream protection district. If you go to the land use
Yeah.
things, it identifies three resource protection designations. If you go to the land use things, it identifies three resource protection designations. One of those is a recommendation to create a stream protection district using the state definition of what a stream is, not the shoreline zoning definition of what a stream is. That would put in place a stream protection corridor along streams. If it were adopted, would put in place a stream protection corridor along all of the identified streams, and...
So with those, are we talking about tributary streams, that would meet those criteria or all stream?
It's, it really, the, the DEP, and Dave, I'm doing this from memory, the, the DEP has a set of criteria that talks about, and if I'm going to, I'm doing this, boy, this is, just don't hold me to this, but I think it says you've got to meet three of the five criteria or something like that to be considered a stream. It does, it could include intermittent streams. It does not include drainages or, you know, artificially created ditches.
Yeah.
You've got to have a mineral, one of the criteria is that you have a mineral bottom, that there's wetland vegetation, et cetera, and it's what the state uses in terms of NERPA to determine whether a activity adjacent to a stream has to, is subject to the NERPA rules.
So we already have those rules, I mean, they're state-applied rules. When, when someone goes to build a home, I think the codes office looks at it, right? Margaret, you, you look at, well, that's a tributary stream, you need to be 75 feet from that. So what are we talking about here doing more than that?
The, the answer to that, I would say, as you and I may remember, there is sometimes an issue relative to whether DEP wants to vigorously or has the capacity to enforce their requirements. And as a result of that, there has been discussion that if there were a local stream protection requirements that are similar to the state requirements, then the town could take action when there are questions about what's being done. I think also proactively, it would give the town maybe an opportunity to have more input into what DEP, in fact, winds up saying you can or can't do under NERPA.
Okay.
At the risk of being, you know, a talky female, I would, I would just add that there is science behind some of the things that you're talking about.
Yeah.
And, and I'm happy to talk with you about what that is after this meeting. I won't belabor it, but I would be happy to speak with you about it.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think the words that we have in here, my interpretation are okay, and, you know, if the town needs, wants to pursue this, then it's going to go to the planning board and other, no, no, but, and then it's going to have to be voted.
Right.
So...
As a separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Or amendment to an existing ordinance.
Right. Okay, anything else? We have the land use map, which looks different. We mentioned the fact that we took the town on land sections off of Doughty Point and Mitchell Field off. We took the mixed-use districts off because they were confusing people. In reality, I was thinking about this the other day. If you start from Mountain Road and go south on 123, that's, that's one heck of a mixed-used area right now. I mean, it has just about everything you could want, from a hair salon to a cafe, to a Grange Hall, to a construction firm, what, you know, just... So it's not that mixed-use is a bad thing, but it's, it just is difficult to explain by highlighting very specific areas on the map that got people a little bit worked up. So we've taken that out specifically to support the, the input that we got from the public, and everybody feels, I think, comfortable with that.
Well, except that the colors are a little confusing. I mean, there's some, some of them are, how dark a blue is that, and which is it, what we're talking about?
Talking about in the land use map?
Yeah, and, is it a rural area or villages? I mean, they, the, is it shoreline business or developed neighborhoods? I mean, they're, those colors are very close, and, I mean, you only have so many colors in the palette, I understand.
Yeah, and we don't want to make this map so big as to...
Yeah.
You know, so some compromises have to be made.
You could use colors and patterns, more colors and patterns.
Okay.
Right, like, like, conserved land has X's through it, so that's pretty easy to tell.
It was a lengthy discussion about colors when this was done.
Let's, let's look at some improvements that we can make quickly to the, to the map that will make it more readily identifiable. All right, the last part of this is really a compilation of goals, policies, and strategies. It's called the implementation plan. I think one of the things that Jane was saying was, okay, this is fine, but, you know, where do you start with this? How do we prioritize and, you know, I was thinking that the proposal that we, we make about a comprehensive plan, what do you call it, comprehensive plan working group or integration implementation committee, is something that, maybe an organization that could tackle this. It's going to have to be a, sort of a broad effort in the sense that it, it really touches all parts of the town, therefore, it's, it's really going to involve a lot of different committees in the town. We have, you know, we haven't obviously laid out how this would, would work exactly, but I don't envision, you know, a committee that meets every month. Maybe you meet quarterly, or every three months, or four months, or something like that, and then have inputs coming in and try to make decisions about where more emphasis needs to be placed, or if there's, there are questions or issues regarding prioritization. Does anybody want to roll up and go through these, this implementation plan in more detail?
No, I just like how you've sort of divvied up the responsibilities, I mean, the suggested responsible parties.
Yeah, and, you know, it's clear that, you know, it spans basically the entire array of committees in the town, which is, as it should be, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, we covered a lot of different things today. I guess what I'd like to, to get is your sense about, I, I know we have a few things maybe to sort out, and we'll work on those, but other than those, how do you feel about this?
Good.
I mean, you have some very high hopes in here, like vegetative buffers, which we've tried before.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, but, you know, things to aim for, at least, yeah.
It's not an ordinance, you know.
No, but the ordinances have to be based by law on this plan.
Yeah.
So...
Not some dream or imagination, but this plan.
By law, they must be based on this plan.
It's a reason why these guys have put two years into this. I mean, there's a reason for it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions at this point in time? All right, just to reiterate, I expect to see the second part of this plan fairly soon. We're going to have a task force meeting tomorrow. I'll let them know about some of the issues that came up here and try to make some corrections that can be easily ported into the plan. I want to be able to put it online no later than January 22nd, a month before the public hearing. We also want to arrange some drop-in sessions, and I'll try to get with the task force to arrange those as soon as possible, and...
If anybody's interested, I have the 1993 comp plan, and it really looks quite different. If anybody's interested in looking at it.
I was reminded about the same size as you.
Al?
Yes.
Can I just correct one thing you said?
I made a mistake.
No, you said, hopefully by the 22nd. 22nd is the drop dead date by which the draft of the plan has to be available for public inspection, and so there's no hopefully.
Okay, so 22nd it is. That's our deadline, for it to be online and have it in hard copy here at the town office, at the libraries.
Correct.
Yeah, I know.
How, how different is this version from what has been online?
It's, it's a little shorter, more concise, it's, I think the writing's a little bit better.
And, Christie, when you say has been online, which one do you, what do you mean?
Don't ask me, don't ask me what version is online, but there's a link.
We've taken all of the, all of the versions off. What I said before was that I left the second part of the original draft intentionally on there because I thought it was a good document just to introduce people to various parts of the town, you know, the economy, the fishing industry, data, that, data that people would not normally come across. That's one of the reasons I left it up there. But I left, I left it up admittedly too long, and Jim, with Jim's help, we've taken all that stuff off, and we said, we said that the, the new stuff is going to be on, I think we said the middle or late part of January or something like that.
Christie, I would answer your question by saying, what was available on the website up until last week? Part one has been substantially revised, reorganized, and a lot of it is much different. Part two has not changed hardly at all. There may be a few data things that have been updated.
Okay. The question relates to, I want to make sure I send it to the fire and rescue planning committee, because I wasn't sure what had changed from an earlier version to this version. And if you want feedback from that committee or those members, are they to come to your meeting tomorrow night? Or sending, send you written comments?
Either way.
Okay. I just want to make sure...
Our meetings have always been open.
Okay. I just don't know how much has changed in some of those sections, so I don't know how closely people were following the earlier version, and might be surprised or not by the updated version.
The fire and rescue section has not substantially changed.
Has not changed that much, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
A parting remark here, this 1993 comp plan is a special thanks to Mark Ironman in it.
As should be the new one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was a second try too, because I think that was a year that it got blown up.
They quite often do get blown up.
Well, there were some things that no trap could be seen from 123 or 124.
Yeah.
There was a scenic vista thing in there then.
Yeah, one of the most interesting comments that I recall during a lot of this stuff, somebody, it was at the Kellogg Church, we had a meeting at the Kellogg Church early last year, and there was an elderly gentleman, well, we're all elderly gentlemen, I guess. There was a...
Where's the elderly gentleman?
George is here.
There was a guy in sort of the back of the room, and after everything was done, he stood up and said, you know, I heard a lot of this stuff 20 some odd years ago, the only thing that's changed is the people in the room. So, so there, there is a certain consistency going through the years of people looking at these issues in the town and raising the same problems and having the same kinds of discussion, and I thought that was, I got a kick out of that, but anyway. So, I don't want to prolong anybody. Thank you very much for this discussion, it was valuable.
No longer with us.
And I appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No.
Yep.